Okay, well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us for our Tuesday, July 22, 2025 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting and Public Hearing. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters. Both these matters have been before the Board before, and posting was made during those times. Reposting was made on the third item, again, for this hearing.
Okay. And to be clear, both of these items were previously tabled by the Board, correct?
That is correct. So for the Board to hear either of these, there would need to be a motion to untable and then to decide whether or not to proceed on the proceeding that has already occurred.
Okay. Before I ask for that, I will ask if any commissioners have disclosures for any item on this agenda?
No, sir.
And I have none either. So moving into both our land use and public hearing agenda items, first for item 2A and 2B, is there a motion from the Board to untable and consider these items? Okay, hearing none, that will remain tabled, and we will move on to item 3. I'll ask the Board, is there any motion to remove this item 3A from the table?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move to untable and consider the Pinery Plain Development 31st Amendment because, no, I move to untable and consider the Pinery Plain Development.
Is there a second?
There is not a second.
Okay. And I suppose it's important to ask, counsel, we do have a first on the floor. It would make sense to untable this, in my mind, if there was a substantial or material modification to the original application as we heard it.
To that degree, I would ask the staff to provide if they believe that there is. But you could, if a second is necessary, you could share, offer that second yourself and call for a vote. With that, the proceeding has taken some direction. We did hear this before, I believe, in May, and at that time, we did hear public comment and direction was given by the Board. So you could hear from the staff, you could hear from the applicant, and then decide how, if you would like to proceed, or you could return this to the Table, or you could deny or approve.
Okay. How would the Board like to proceed?
Well, if there is not a will from the Board, then I'd be happy to withdraw my motion, and we can review the documents provided to us and come back another day.
Commissioner?
At this stage of the game, I mean, you know, listen, one of our colleagues, a fellow county commissioner in another part of the state, made a comment at a water commission, a water congress meeting, that we go into a land use meeting where we feel like we're the last ones to know anything, because the reality is, we have to review it during the hearing. So at that, given the latitude that we have, my preference would be, we have now had the documents presented in a packet, let's take time to review those documents, review for any changes, and then we can direct staff to bring it back to us when the Board is ready. At this stage of the game, again, if there are two changes that have been made, I'm just not aware of them.
Yeah, I am not either, and I've read the packet. I'm going to ask staff, if you have any input or recommendation, has there been a material modification that would warrant a hearing today?
Kurt White, come on for staff. The applicant did, has, in their mind, has made the changes that were requested by the Board at the January 28 hearing, when it was tabled, for them to go back and redesign, and that's what they're, they're going to present today, is their attempt to meet the Board's desires or wishes, from what they heard at the 28th hearing. So, but if you'd like further about the changes, the applicant can probably describe those better than staff can.
Chair?
Yes.
So, okay, well, you know, obviously, we don't talk to the applicant. They talk to our staff. Staff doesn't give us, like, pre-briefings. Based on Kurt's report right now, I'd be willing to second to untable.
Okay. So first, we'll need, have you withdrawn your motion, Commissioner? Okay, so we do have a first, we have a second to untable to hear the applicant. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we'll go ahead and hear the applicant's presentation. If you'd like to come up to the podium, state where you're from, and your name, please.
My name is Chris Meeks. I'm, I live at 7811 East Briarwood Boulevard in Centennial, 80112. I did have a question, if, I did have a question if you wanted me to go through the presentation for the nuts and bolts of the whole development, or if you wanted us just to talk about what we changed. I'm happy to do either, but I, I want to be respectful of everyone's time.
I'll poll the Board, but I believe we're familiar with the packet and your original presentation. I would be most interested in hearing what changes, if any, you have made. Board, what would you like to see?
I think a focus upon the changes would be key.
Okay.
Yeah, I concur. If changes have been made, you guys, you heard the community, you heard from us at your request, you asked for that guidance, okay, let's see it.
Sounds great. I'm going to let Rusty take over on this one.
Let me get to the right slide, and then I'll, I'll start my presentation. My name is Russell Hall. I'm with High Line Engineering and Surveying Company, located at 99280 Blue Star Drive in Parker, Colorado. Our company prepared the initial presentation and the, and the actual planning documents at our January 28 hearing. We listened to the community's testimony, we listened to the Board, and we've come today to basically show you what we've changed. And we've had five meetings with the Pinery community over the last two years, and we've kind of narrowed down the, the topics to the density of this subdivision, and whether, whether or not this property should be an equestrian property and allow horses to board on the property. We had a long discussion on Section 1520.01 of the zoning criteria, whether the amendment is consistent with the development standards and commitments and the overall intent of the planned development. This statement has multiple topics within it. First, that we had presented on January 28, we believe that we have presented a development that is consistent with the neighborhood. As you can see here on our, on our site plan, conceptual site plan, we're proposing homes that, we're proposing homes that are less dense than the surrounding community, it blends in well, and we believe that when you drive through this subdivision, it maintains the character, the continuity, and the beauty aspect of living in the Pinery subdivision. What we, what we failed to realize at the last public hearing, I believe, is the second half of this, of this criteria, which is the commitments and overall intent of the planned development. At, at our last public hearing, we made a case that two and a half acre lots, which allowed horses, pigs, goats, chickens, and other farm animals, were not compatible with an urban development. But we've, we've listened to the community, and they've requested the allowance of horses to be boarded on this property. So the main change, and the reason we're here today to present, is we have now dictated 12 and a half acres of land that we are proposing a land use for a private equestrian center to be on this development. We've heard the neighbors say that they, when they, when they look out their back window, they would love to see horses. That's a perception of the, of what the community felt the intent of this property should be in, as we move forward. The intent is to have horses on this property. We still stand by our position that, you know, the remaining farm animals should not be allowed on this property. It is not compatible with an urban development, but we are, we are looking at, you know, a significant portion of this site for equestrian land use now. The site plan that I had up there before, the sketch, kind of shows what the intent would be for this development, you know, with a, with a large hay barn and stalls proposed here, some type of riding arena. We have also, in our guidelines for the PUD, will allow day stalls to be constructed at the rear of the homes, abutting in the Colorado Horse Park here, and that also gives, you know, the, the new homeowners that do choose to own and, and board horses on this property, a day use with, with the animals. And we've also proposed an equestrian easement around the entire perimeter of this development, because we, we understand that High Prairie Farms, which is located to the northwest of this development, they, they don't presently have horses, but they do allow for horses on that property. And we want some continuity through the Pinery subdivision that would allow horses to come from High Prairie Farms, ride freely through the Pinery 40 property. And here, we're looking at Bayou Gulch, just to give you guys some orientation of, of land uses around, but there's a considerable amount of open space where equestrian enjoyment can, can continue off this property on, on open space within Douglas County. That's, that's really what we came here to, to show that's brand new. We feel that this is a use that will fit within this community, and it appeases the community and their concept, or their, how they understand, understood this property would be developed in the future at some point. We've, we appreciate the Douglas County staff in assisting us in our design team, with our design team, in adding the private equestrian land use to our rezoning amendment, to be in compliance with both the Douglas County zoning and the Pinery PUD standards. Thank you.
Commissioners, I, I wanted to add one more thing. This is Chris Meeks. We understand that testimony probably won't be permitted today, but I just wanted to highlight that we should be in your packet, that we do have over 100 support letters, and we had a really good neighborhood meeting with, we felt support with several members in the neighborhood as well, with this equestrian theme. So we feel really good about it. We just wanted to let you know and just highlight that we have a ton more support than we did prior to this. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask the Board for any questions of the applicant.
So my questions go to, if we could please get up the, the prior diagram of the land, please, that had the equestrian features noted in the middle. All right, so I want to, my question, I'm not seeing acreage specified here. So our middle area, where you've got the arena and the stables, what is the acreage of that open space that you're planning on?
The, the entire open space is 12 acres through here, and this acreage in the middle, of course, is the largest piece, being approximately six acres in size.
Okay, so a couple football fields.
Right, right.
What is our acreage in the southeast corner on Bayou Gulch?
And, yeah, down here, we're looking at about three and a half acres and a couple, about two and a half acres over here in this far piece, and then the rest of this is just a 50-foot buffer that, that runs along the north edge of the Colorado Horse Park.
Okay, and then per presentation that we just heard, there will be equestrian access on that buffer allowed, even with adjacent neighbors outside of this development?
Correct, correct. And, and along the north perimeter as well. We're proposing an equestrian easement around the entire perimeter of this development.
Okay. Okay, that's a great plan, and today, that's a great plan, but when this is built out, how is that going to be controlled? I mean, you know, are you guys hanging out to be the property managers as well? I mean?
We, we have retained, you know, the services of an equestrian designer to assist us through this process and understand it better. So our intent for this development would be that the structures themselves would be owned and maintained by the homeowners' association for the Pinery 40 development. When you, when you, when you own a horse yourself, and, and you put it, you know, in one of the stalls, then your costs would increase significantly on the HOA dues, because now you're paying for the food and the, and the care of the animal. So, so we've kind of split it up to where, if you don't have a horse, you still have a really cool amenity. You have a nice barn, you have, you know, you get to view the horses, but you don't have that high HOA due every month, because you don't want to partake in ownership of a horse. But on the other hand, if you do enjoy, you know, riding and so forth, your, your responsibility increases to maintain and take, take good care of that animal.
Yeah, I mean, we have other areas of the county that are similar developments, there are equestrian developments, and far be it from me to tell those owners of horses that they could be driving better cars instead. You know, I have a couple friends who are equestrians, and that's an investment that is something dear to them. So, okay. Chair, I think those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ben Winkle, anything additional?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for being here today. I do, further clarification on who, so it's a privately owned, or, sorry, it's a privately owned hay barn, stalls, and arena. Who, how, what would the ownership, ownership structure actually look like? Would it be a company or an HOA?
No, we're, we're actually proposing that the HOA to be approved for this development own and, and realistically contract out maintenance for, for the, for the buildings and structures, but they would be in charge of it and have the ultimate responsibility of making sure that the structures stay intact and in good condition.
Okay. How many stalls would be included?
That's, that's really going to be one of those issues that come up more during the preliminary plating process, but we, we have tried to maximize the number of horses that would be allowed on this property at 20, which is a pretty high number, we feel, but it gives a lot of home, lot owners in this subdivision the ability to own a horse. And we've also discussed internally that you can have fractional, fractional ownership as well, so that you, you know, maybe cut some of the costs, and you still get to ride, but, you know, you're probably looking at, you know, a single stall for the day, you know, would be here at the rear, and we're, we're proposing those kind of like duplexes, so that you'd have two stalls next to each other at a common corner, you know, for your horse to reside during the day or overnight. I mean, there's no restriction against that, but, but the, all of the equipment, the feed, and everything would be stored over here in the, in the large hay barn, and of course, there's, where a bulk of the stalls would be located as well, next to the barn.
So it would be up to the future homeowners' association to build it, construct it, and do all that? What if, and if the future HOA was like, let's put a picnic area, a playground, something like there, then that would be up to the future HOA?
Yeah, and we've, we've had internal discussions on that topic, you know, the hay barn itself, you know, would serve as a monument for this development. Everybody would, you know, know that that's what Pinery 40 has, and that would be a great place for venues to be located in the future, and including, you know, barbecues and that sort of thing for the neighborhood.
Okay. And I think my last point of, before, and I do want to hear from the public, of course, what would, you've mentioned there was a public outreach hearing. Maybe just tell me more about that, when it was, and where it was, and how many people showed up?
Maybe to clarify, are you asking between the last hearing and now?
Yeah, he referenced that there was a public outreach, town halls of sorts. Just maybe tell me more about that.
We've had, we've had two processes that we went through since January. We've contacted businesses, residents in Douglas County along the front range, and that are familiar with Parker and Douglas County, and specifically the Pinery area, and we asked them to, you know, if they would support, you know, this development. We showed them a copy, you know, the, the later slide, you know, where it shows the, you know, the green and the homes and the lots. We submitted, we gave probably over 100 people the opportunity to, to support or not support our project, and we received, I think, over 110 letters of support, which we have presented to staff, and a list of the, the owners and where they reside as well. And we now, you know, have that, you know, in our, in our packet. We've also reached out, again, to the community. We've invited everybody that's, that's here today, and some other neighbors, to attend another neighborhood meeting we had last week, and we presented our ideas and, and the changes and the concessions that we've made to introduce this Western theology, or ideology, onto this development, as well as continuity and nice homes.
Hang tight, let's end that line of questioning here. Commissioner?
I wanted to hear about the specifics of the meeting. Neither one of ours. There we go. I just wanted to hear specifics about, I mean, I think you're about to do that, but your microphone is turned off, so maybe just when was the meeting held and?
Yes, sir. So the meeting was held last week, last, last Thursday, I believe. The reason why the meeting was so close to the county commissioner meeting is because we were going back and forth with staff. Initially, we hit a pretty major roadblock when it came to having equestrian on this, being incorporated with this project. Staff has been great. We have, we have worked together. There was a lot of hurdles and jumps to go through, but we were able to finally come to a compromise where we are able to have 20 stalls and, and horses and equestrian on this site. But we didn't get approval until recently, and then we had to do our mailing and get those out, which, which is two weeks prior to the meeting. So everything ran really close to this meeting. It was not intentional, it's just, that's just how it came. As far as some feedback that, that we got, one was from an HOA president of the Pinery who said, he was, he was very positive, and he said, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, James, but he said that he, he supported the project, he was, he wanted to work with us versus anyone else, he appreciated us, and he appreciated how we wanted to compromise. And then there was another neighbor who, who said that she thought the number of lots was acceptable, and she appreciated it, and she was okay with it. Her, her only negative was the horses. She, she thought that maybe it wasn't appropriate. So, but it was a far cry from the other meetings we had. It was, in my opinion, it was, it was a lot more positive. It was really like day and night. I mean, to have an HOA president say that they enjoyed working with us was, was great, so.
And then one final question. I'm looking at the list of supporters, folks from Parker, Lone Tree, Centennial, Aurora. Are these folks that essentially, what did they sign? Does it, I support it generally, or I want to live there someday, or somewhere in between?
That's James Marine with Aegis Engineering. We presented a lot of folks, we reached out to the Douglas County EDC as well, to show them what we were looking at, proposing here, to get their support, and just a lot of business owners throughout the area. It is difficult to get somebody to support a subdivision. It just is. Nobody wants to stick their neck out. I would say to Chris that it wasn't like, it was not sunshine and roses at our meeting last week, but it, there was a definite turn, and it was one of those things that I wished we could have had more of those meetings that were positive. But we've been at this for two and a half years, and we've continued to compromise, and we've just got to the point where, you know, they want 15 lots, we want 44. You know, it's, and then, you know, we came back with the horses, the Western theme was their last big push at the last hearing, so I think we accomplished that.
Commissioner Van Winkle, to answer your question, I think, more directly, we created a flyer, in a sense, it's probably the wrong word, but it had a whole synopsis of the whole project with the horses, where it was located at, everything that we are presenting here today, and we said, if you support this project, if you think this is something that you would want to support, can you please sign and put your address? And so that was, that portion of it. We also got letters as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, I, I really appreciate, I've always appreciated, since my time as a land use attorney, to the planning commission, to here, when neighbors and neighborhoods work things out with one another. I think you all know your communities far better than we ever would, but as stewards of it, we want to be very responsive. I think part of the goal with the last conversation we had here was for you to engage in that conversation with the community, I think many of which are represented here today, and try to identify that, that win-win for us to review. When I look at the, and I appreciate the modification around the equestrian use, I think that's certainly a value that many citizens have expressed, but my sense in the last hearing was that it was more about density. It was more about the number of units, and you going from 45 to 44 does not sound significant to me. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, there's, there's two things I'd like to bring up. Yes, we've, we've, you know, looked at the density. Basically, we lost some lots in the center where we were proposing the, the barn and the, and the arena, but we're trying to make the numbers work also financially for this development, and that's always the challenge, you know, what number is, is, you know, can you go down to and still, you know, make it, you know, balance on the books and pencil in? I think that that's important. I also, you know, I think it's important also to mention that with regards to the community, the, in the last neighborhood meeting that we had, there was, there was a good, significant push back to us, wanting more detail on what this is going to look like, and, you know, we, we had to, you know, draw the line. We told them what we thought and what are, what we had researched on this type of land use, but, you know, this is just a land use plan for, in a private equestrian center, you know, all of the details that are, you know, will be worked out during the preliminary plating site development plan process for this development. It's very difficult to appease, you know, the community at this level of design that we're at today. We've done the best we can to present the information that we felt was accurate, looking forward to the future, but today, you know, we're willing to make the pledge that we continue to work with the community through the plating process, to make sure that they're informed and that they have input and say in the development as we move forward, because they're the neighbors in this development, and we need to work together.
Well, I appreciate that. Let me just ask if there's any additional questions or comments from the Board. I, I recognize that a lot of the citizens that are here today, you're not getting paid to be here, you're taking time out of your day to be here in our hearing room, and you wouldn't be here if you didn't have something significant to say, so I- So I share Commissioner Van Winkle's desire to hear from you and make sure that we are listening to your comments. I would like to get to that, but I don't want to do that unless you guys have additional questions for the applicant. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to thank you to the applicant. We appreciate that. With that, I'd like to open it up for citizen comment. I will remind everybody, we do want to hear from, from all of you, but if you can avoid duplicative comments, ditto is fine. You know, I want to make sure that new ideas and concepts that we have not heard all get surfaced here and we do get a chance to hear those. But you are free to comment on this application as you see fit. You will have three minutes each. And if you'll just line up at the podium so we can do it in order, I think that would be pretty efficient for us. So if you do plan to comment, please line up at the podium and we'll start with the first. And ma'am, if you want to just state your name and where you're from?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jen Schultz, the president of High Prairie Farms 1A Homeowners Association. I'm here today to underscore the critical importance of preserving our equestrian legacy as we discuss the proposed rezoning of the Pinerie 40 property. I'm going to go a little off of what I say, but I'll stay in my time. I'm a 66-year-old woman who's been through meetings all over, internationally, board meetings. I can tell you that the meeting last week was not a kumbaya by any stretch of the imagination. It was the most horrific meeting I've ever sat through. So I'll go back on to speech. Our marketability at High Prairie Farms is significantly enhanced by our covenants promoting responsible horse ownership. The equestrian estate zoning in the Pinerie was established through thoughtful planning, and there's no reason this vision cannot continue to thrive in the Pinerie 40 area. While I'd hope for more communication from the Pinerie 40 development team, it's important to emphasize that the effective bridle trail must be wide, fenced, and well separated from roads and with minimal street crossings and designated staging areas. I must also express my concerns regarding the proposed HOA-owned and staffed equestrian center. Based on this proposed 44 homes in this development, the financial viability of such a facility is problematic. Selling homes to support 20 horses would mean that the majority of the homeowners would end up subsidizing overhead costs for a service that many may not use. This would impose an unmarketable, unmarketable financial burden on the residents. Helen Kribling's financial, foundational work in the equestrian zoning was both deliberate and strategic, anchored by the Colorado Horse Park to the south and High Prairie Farms to the north. This vision has been supported by essential infrastructure developed over the past four decades, including the tunnel beneath South Pinerie Parkway. The proposed rezoning of Pinerie 40 poses a significant risk to this meticulously crafted framework, jeopardizing the integrity of our community. It is important to note that the idea of preserving our equestrian way of life is not merely a romanticized vision of the past. Rather, it represents a contemporary commitment to maintaining the values of land stewardship, responsible ownership, and community engagement that is still relevant today. We believe that equestrian activities and residential development can coexist harmoniously, as demonstrated by our covenants that ensure clean, safe, and enjoyable living environment. I urge the BOCC to carefully consider the potential consequences of forcing riders through a community with dense lots and questionable connections to the horse park. Let us work together to safeguard the equestrian legacy that is vital to Douglas County's identity. Thank you for your time and for considering the voices of our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Rob Lor, and I proudly represent the Douglas County Economic Development Corporation as the director of membership. I first want to thank you for this opportunity to speak today, and I do speak in support of the proposed Pinerie Plan development. As someone who works directly with businesses, both small up to the enterprise throughout Douglas County, I could tell you that one of the most consistent challenges we hear from both established businesses and those considering coming to Douglas County is housing. When we work to attract or retain employers that bring high-paying skilled jobs to Douglas County like Safran Aerospace, Common Spirit Health, we just did a ribbon cutting at Northrop Grumman, these are, these are companies that we must ensure that their workforce has access to housing that fits their needs and their lifestyle. So the proposed development, as I've seen it since January, offers exactly that. The Pinerie project represents a thoughtful and well-aligned approach to growth. Forty-four single-family homes on 40-plus acres designed to complement the area's existing character, provide not just luxury living, but also opportunity in the community. These homes will serve as an important piece of the broader economic development and continuation of that investment in Douglas County. Equally important is the integrity behind this project. The applicant is committed and respected member of the Douglas County EDC and a trusted board and stakeholder in our shared economic future. The leadership and vision has already contributed positively to the region, and this development is a continuation of that investment in Douglas County. So with generous open spaces, buffers, trail systems for the horses and people, connecting all the other communities, and a low-density footprint, this plan strikes a rare balance of growth that is responsible, conceptual, and community-focused. On behalf of our membership, I urge your support from the commissioners of this proposal. It's not just about new homes. It's about creating a sustainable and attractive environment for those who are helping shape the future of our county. So I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you all for your leadership and your ongoing to commitment to the prosperity of Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Welcome.
Hello, commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Jordan Getz, and I will be speaking on behalf of the Douglas County Economic Develop- Economic Development Corporation as well. We officially submitted a letter on behalf of the EDC, and I'm going to lead that, read that aloud. Dear Commissioners, on behalf of the Douglas County EDC, we are writing to express our strong support for the Pinerie Plan development. As the EDC continues to grow and attract high-paying jobs to our community, it is vital that our county offers a housing supply that meets the needs of new employees and their families. The Pinerie development provides an essential solution by increasing housing opportunity while preserving the character of the surrounding area. The proposal, which includes 44 single-family lots on 47 acres, aligns with the Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan, demonstrating consistency with existing zoning, environmental considerations, and adjacent developments. The plan has been thoughtfully designed to blend seamlessly with neighboring properties, offering multimillion-dollar homes that complement the area's existing residential character. The applicant is a valued member of the DCEDC board. They have shown deep commitment to the well-being and development of our entire community. This project not only enhances our housing stock, but it also does strengthen our ability to support our organizations such as Northrop Grumman and Safran Aerospace. Both of these corporations will bring high-paying jobs that contribute to Douglas County's economic vitality. Furthermore, the proposed development includes extensive, extensive open space buffers, trails, and low-density designs, ensuring, ensuring a balance between growth and environmental stewardship. The Pinerie development supports Douglas County goals of maintaining community harmony and enhancing quality of life. The Douglas County EDC is proud to support this amendment and urges your approval of this proposal. It is a strategic and responsible step towards meeting the housing needs of our expanding workforce and ensuring that Douglas County continues to thrive as a premier location for living and working. Thank you, commissioners, for your consideration.
Thank you so much, sir. Welcome.
Hello, gentlemen. I'm speaking on behalf of my HOA. Do I get six minutes like last time?
You do get six minutes. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. My name is Victoria Deppi. I live at 5707 Wildberry Court in Parker, and I'm the vice president and secretary of the High Prairie Farms filing number three HOA. And I'm authorized to speak on behalf of the board today. You might remember me as the lady who talked about bee colony collapse at the January hearing. I, along with most other people in the room, I'm sure, was disappointed that we were not able to reach a final decision on this development in January. And before I go further, I would like to just thank Mr. Hall and his team because it's obviously, obvious that they took the comments of the equine community to heart and really worked hard to answer those concerns. Unfortunately, as you pointed out, Commissioner Layden, they forgot about the density concerns. I'm disappointed to see that none of the concerns that I raised here six months ago have been addressed in the revised proposal. I also, at that meeting, learned of the erosion and flooding problems being experienced by homeowners in the area surrounding Shire Meadows and the substantial cost that will be involved in addressing those problems. And to be clear, I think everyone in this room understands that it's not Mr. Hall's responsibility to remediate a pre-existing situation that was not of his making. But allowing three times the number of homes will create new problems in the form of significantly more hardscape, roofs, streets, sidewalks, patios, driveways, and so forth. And that means more water rushing out of the neighborhood instead of being slowed as it's absorbed in lawns, gardens, fields, and the like. The specific impact to my community lies in the fact that we're in the same metro district as Shire Meadows. And our concern is that it will not be Mr. Hall, but our homeowners who, through the metro district, will bear the cost of remediating the problems caused by the significantly higher density proposed here. Even if the county were to chip in, those are our tax dollars too. Six months ago, Mr. Hall stood at this very podium and told us all plainly that the reason he wanted this dramatic increase in density was driven by profitability concern, and he reiterated that today. Granting a variance based on a developer coming before you had in hand, claiming that they can't make money is a very dangerous precedent, and I think that's why 152004 prohibits this. As an HOA officer, I've also been asked to discuss my concerns about the HOA-managed facility. My neighborhood's not very big. It's only 63 homes. Attendance at our quarterly meetings averages about 10% of our households. In addition to getting people to meetings, we also struggle to field board and architectural committee candidates when that need arises. Now, it may sound like I'm complaining about my neighbors, but I'm not because I interpret these numbers to mean that 90% of our neighbors trust their board and they're happy with the job that we're doing managing our community. But let's face it, being on an HOA board means dealing primarily with unhappy neighbors. And I bet you all know what that feels like. I'm giving you a peek behind this curtain because I'm not sure Mr. Hall realizes what a challenge it can be to recruit board members, particularly in light of how much more difficult the legislature has made that job over the past few years. And I have to think that's going to be even more difficult in this case because the pool of candidates is significantly, significantly smaller than even my smaller neighborhoods. It requires the management of what's called a limited common element. That's an amenity offered by an HOA that not everyone can use. And in this case, it's the equine facility, and fewer than half the families will ever be able to make use of it at any given time. And it's hard for me to imagine someone who doesn't own a horse wanting to donate their time to shoulder oversight responsibility for a facility that they won't be using, or worse, one that they can't use because the facility is at capacity. Lastly, the HOA will likely face the additional challenge of financing the facility during periods in which there are fewer than 20 homeowners who wish to stable a horse there. This situation could arise immediately. If the developer sells the first two dozen homes and none of those homeowners buys a hor- has a horse, will he let the remaining 20 sit on the market until 20 buyers with horses come along? Or will he sell them to the first buyer? And that would leave the HOA holding the bag. So my recommendation to you as commissioners is to take into consideration whether this equine facility, as envisioned as an HOA-owned and managed property, can be sustained as a going concern. More importantly, though this facility may or may not have satisfied the equine community, the density of this development remains problematic. So I'd like to close by echoing earlier remarks regarding the open space fund and request that we invest a fraction of the estimated $350 million this tax is estimated to raise to acquire this parcel is open space. And this would be a win-win. This would support the overwhelmingly expressed aims by voters three years ago and at the same time allay Mr. Hall's fears that he won't be able to make enough money on this land. And if that's not feasible, I see no alternative but to deny this variance. This project found no support at all in the planning commission. In January, it was shown to fail to meet four of the criteria set forth in 1520, and this new plan sidesteps the density issue by proffering a potentially non-viable equestrian facility that divides homeowner interests in this small community. Most importantly, it still fails sections 15, 20, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you as well. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name's Susan De Silva, and I have an equine video business, Pro Horse Productions, and I represent dozens of dressage, hunter jumper, and eventing trainers, and I'm requesting six minutes. I probably won't use all six of it, but I've done that time. So I essentially represent a homeowners association of, of trainers. Having been an equine videographer for 25 years, I have filmed literally tens of thousands of horses at the horse park and at every barn within Parker, Castle Rock, Franktown. I could go on and on. I've gone to Wellington, I've gone South Dakota, Nevada, Arizona. Like, horses are what I do. And I appreciate the feedback that you wanted to see horses, that people wanted to see horses.
And just, just so you're aware, we're going to keep it at three. We just limit that to HOAs and metro districts, but please, please proceed.
Your expertise is not in question.
Sure. I also have a master's degree in industrial organizational psychology, and I understand different perspectives. I understand the first group of people coming up and talking about needing more homes and affordable homes. I have ridden in neighborhoods like what is being put on paper, and it's dangerous. It's not what horses are meant to be a part of, and it wasn't what Helen Kribling's original vision was. It's a pretty document, but it doesn't show the horse park, this massive facility right next door, and how many horses there, and you're saying you can ride through that. My neighborhood, most importantly, I live with 27 homes on five to 10 acres, and the Amazon drivers and the FedEx trucks and the kids with their e-bikes rip-roaring around. It's dangerous. How do you train a horse to handle 44 homes through a community? Because on paper, you're saying you want to appease people who want to see horses. As a professional equestrian, it, when you're horse shopping, I have filmed millions of dollars worth of sale horses, all the questions you ask. How much is this horse seeing city life? Right? You want a trail horse, you want a Western theme, you want to see a horse. How many head injuries do you want to see? Because you've pumped all these people and all this density around horses. And how many kids who just got their ATV and got their e-bike and are rip-roaring around this neighborhood? Again, you don't see this massive equestrian facility that's right next door. You see, look, it's going to look pretty and like the surrounding area. You're not seeing the thousands of horses, tens of thousands of horses that have competed at this international quality facility that Littleton Equine believed in enough to look out for. So I personally interviewed Helen Kribling. I personally interviewed people who competed at her facility. This was her legacy, right? Transitional equestrian properties. Perhaps most important is I can say I have my horses at home. It is a quantum leap in relationship with a thousand-pound flight animal when you take care of it day to day versus you say, look, it's going to be at a, you know, an HOA-controlled community from developers who are not horse owners. To me, this scares the bejeebies out of me, what you are proposing to do so that people who are not equestrians say they can see horses. The actual riders going through this mess scares me. So I had prepared things, I timed it, I prepared, you know, I, I planned all of what I was going to say. I respectfully appreciate you hearing from someone who's seen the busted legs open, seen the head injuries, seen the trauma of what happens when you mix high-density communities. I just spent three and a half months in Nevada and looked at communities like this, and I'm like, I'm not going to keep my horse near that. Two and a half acre lots of a true relationship with the horse community where at the end of a stressful day, you can go, oh, my gosh, it's a beautiful sunset, I'm going to get on my horse and ride. That's what Helen Kribling's legacy was. And you all have the responsibility of how you decide how this legacy is continued. So thank you for your time. This scares the bejeebies out of me, what you guys are trying to put together and say.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. We appreciate that. Yes, sir? We're going to, please refrain from any outbursts, if we would. Yes, sir?
Sorry, say again, sir?
If you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Yes, sir. My name is Sheldon Irish, I-R-I-S-H. My wife Nancy and I have lived at 7978 Sistina Way for over 20 years. It's adjacent to these 47 acres that are being talked about today. Commissioner Layden, you made a special point at the 28th January Board of Commissioner Land Use meeting to recommend to Mr. Simonsen, by the way, he's not here, that a town hall-type meeting be conducted with the community. meeting be conducted with the community to solicit inputs and potentially gain support for their project. In over five months, no collaborative discussions were ever happened. We'd never saw them. First time the publications was when we saw them online. Their 16th July town hall meeting was only to share the submitted project update, and they achieved no community support mainly because of that. We were asking questions they couldn't answer. You also suggested lot density, maybe around 30, be a good number. They reduced one. Commissioner Teal, you were asked by Mr. Simonsen that would you do, what would you do regarding equestrian inclusion? You in turn asked him to see what Dr. Tisher thought. In over five months, they never reached out to Dr. Tisher. Dr. Tisher submitted a letter dated 17 July clearly stating his lack of support for this project, especially with 44 lot density and 11.7-acre HOA-managed private boarding area. And in his words, I quote, "Is not something I have seen work." By the way, Piney Forty still has not obtained agreements on drainage adjustments that they need over his property. There's a High Prairie Farms Metro District letter dated 21 July discusses the concerns regarding Piney Forty's narrative. Specifically of concern is their verbiage regarding HOA and district future responsibilities if the project is approved as submitted. I'm quoting from their letter. "The district has serious concerns regarding the long-term upkeep and maintenance of the proposed private recreation area." They went on to say in the letter that the private recreation area would not be included as part of any open space maintenance agreements. Piney Forty reliance on the district for long-term upkeep and quality is questionable. Piney Forty has had no engagement with the district to share this plan and get any concerns that the district has regarding any future support or any contract anticipations, which they reference. I like to keep the end in mind when looking at a project execution. It keeps me focused. I envision the developer and this nonexistent HOA encountering obstacles and financial failure due to startup costs and long-term maintenance contracts. Many equestrian experience individuals are speaking today about the downfalls of the proposed equestrian area, but what it comes down to is this: the HOA-owned equestrian area proposed by Piney Forty doesn't appear to be viable, and the metro district has stated they wouldn't take it on as part of the district. This creates a situation where the equestrian state zoning and culture next to a world-class facility is forever gone. Commissioners, please reject this submittal and please refuse, excuse me, please preserve the intended use of this equestrian land. The two-and-a-half acres is driven by county requirements. That's what drives the 15 lots that we're requesting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional citizen comment?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Greg Watanabe. I'm the president of HOA filing 23 in the Timbers. I'm going to kind of go from the last to the beginning a little bit here.
Sir, let me pause. Is that distinct from the HOA that we heard from earlier? That is correct.
No, I'm filing 23.
You're filing, so it is distinct from the other HOA?
It is. Yes, it is distinct.
Okay. I just want to make sure you get a full six minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I want to make it clear that the residents in the community of the Timbers is not against development. We're not against growth. What we're for is for the original zoning that was, that is in place today and not the high-density variance that is being asked for. Commissioners have asked if the requesters had met with the community, and they said, yes, we did last week. However, they presented what had already been submitted to the planning commission. They did not have any input during the five months from January until July to solicit, sit down, have a conversation with the residents in the surrounding communities. That did not happen. That was a request to the commissioners as we went forward. They make statements throughout their amendment additions this time about what High Prairie Farms is going to do, High Prairie Farms Metro District, what the Colorado Horse Park will need to do, conversations around drainage, conversations around access, conversations around management of the open area. As I said before, it was a request of the commissioners for them to sit down with the community and to have a conversation about how could we get to some middle ground, if there was middle ground that was going to be attainable. Again, those things never happened in five months. The meetings that they held with businesses in Lone Tree and Littleton and Centennial aren't really pertinent to what is going on within this, this request for a variance. They made several statements in their, in their revised application to the Amendment 31 that took perhaps a little bit of liberty, and it could have been a mistype or a misunderstanding of what was going on. There's a request within the requirements about public access. They said, well, there's public access on South Piney Parkway. There is no public transportation, excuse me, public transportation on South Piney Parkway. They make a statement about South Piney Drive, the access into this area, as being a restricted roadway today. It is not a restricted roadway. It's an open roadway. So these small features that they've listed that haven't been thought out or are not accurate are really a concern to the community as to the viability of this project going forward as they are requesting. The equestrian area that they've set aside with a barn, a hay barn, stalls, we just heard that that's on about six-and-a-half acres, that the highlighted area in the center. And yet, we're going to put 20 horses on six-and-a-half fenced acres. They make a, they made a statement earlier that a horse on two-and-a-half acres is not reasonable. That was in the January, the August meeting. And yet, now they're coming forward and saying, well, it's fine to compact horses on this, on this area and not have them have necessarily free range. You really can't count all the other green areas that's around. Some of that other green area is drainage. It's also pocket park area. You're not going to mix a pocket park with free access to a horse. That's not going to happen and be, and be safe for the community. We talk about integrity, honesty, and transparency. That would have gone a long way had these, had the developers had those honest, open meetings with the community. That has not happened to date. It has, it has been a presentation, this is what we're doing, thank you. I will, I will end again with saying the community is not opposed to the development as it is currently zoned. We're against development of 44 homes on the 47 acres with no input to the equestrian component of this. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Additional citizen comment?
Julie Luna, L-U-N-A, and I live about a block down from the horse park and the development area. The January BOCC hearing on Piney Forty's major rezoning proposal ended with Commissioner Layden stating, "If you're asking us to vote on this application with no changes, I think you have three no votes. I would be open to tabling for further study so that there may be some additional opportunity for these applicants to put in their best effort with these citizens and maybe answer some of the questions we heard tonight." Commissioners, leading up to the tabling, you were very clear in your thoughts, including from Commissioner Layden, "This is so inconsistent with the current PD that I'm really struggling with why we've had our citizens out here for several hours hearing something that doesn't comport with approval standards at all." Commissioner Teal noted that he couldn't get over the fact that the current zoning does seem sufficient for development, and also said that the problem is, "I'm not seeing enough reason to say yes to rezoning versus maintaining the current zoning and putting a plan in front of us for the current zoning." Mr. Simonsen asked, "Is there anything they can add to help move this forward?" Commissioner Layden responded, "Yes, getting the parties together, having conversations." He encouraged Piney Forty multiple times to engage with the community in town halls. Piney Forty did not reach out to the community in the five months between the January hearing and the late June submittal of a new plan. Yes, they did reach out for a community to last, a community meeting last Wednesday after new plans had already been submitted to the county. Folks were discouraged, disappointed, upset, and angry to get invited to a meeting just so that Piney Forty could tell you they did indeed have a meeting with the community. Mr. Simonsen asked, "What kind of engagement exactly would translate into embracing the equestrian culture?" Commissioner Teal replied, "Not sure I have that answer, Dave, but I would say what could be done to help alleviate Dr. Tisher's concerns." Piney Forty didn't reach out to Dr. Tisher or the Colorado Horse Park in the five months before they submitted a new plan. So in five months, Piney Forty LLC didn't reach out to the surrounding community members, not to the HOA boards, not to High Prairie Farms 1A and Equestrian Estate Community in the Piney, not to the Colorado Horse Park, and not to High Prairie Farms Metro District. Instead, they adjusted the number of homes in their plan from 45 to 44 and added a private equestrian boarding and enjoyment area to their plan. I honestly really do wish that that equestrian area made sense, but I don't think it's likely that this equestrian area would ever come to fruition, and if it did, it would probably fail. I wish it was a workable idea, but I really don't think it is. Maybe if Piney Forty had engaged with the community, they might have figured out it wasn't such a good idea. Or maybe they did figure it probably wasn't viable, but hey, at least it would get approval for their plan since it now included that equestrian element that the commissioners were asking for. Thank you.
We're not going to have any outbursts. Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? And I'm going to pause citizen comment for a moment. So I have some real concerns right now. I really do. So the intent and the purpose of tabling this particular application was to give the applicant the opportunity to have this conversation. My years of doing this, anytime you have this many citizens showing up, that is an immediate signal to me that that meeting did not happen or it did not happen correctly. So I need to ask you a very pointed question, which is really following on what Commissioner Van Winkle was trying to get at before we remove this from, from tabling so we could hear it, is whether or not you engage this community in the five months between when we first heard this initial application.
You want me to take the podium?
You can answer it from wherever you'd like, sir.
Okay. Well, from that meeting that we had, last public hearing, we heard, can we make it more Western? So we went and engaged...
With all due respect, that is not my question. My question is, did you...
You're asking if I met with the people, if I was getting to that.
Correct. That's not, well, if you can just answer that question, I think that'd be helpful.
We, once we were able to work with staff and have equestrian approved or okayed, that's when we did engage and took it to them, yes.
So you took a plan to staff, worked with staff on this plan, and then once you had submitted a plan, that's when you engaged the community?
Yes.
That is completely backwards, and that is completely inconsistent with what we asked you to do. In good faith, we asked you to engage with the community on the front end and have that conversation so we could get to this point and have a healthy conversation. And it's, we're very pro-development within our land use, we're very pro-business. We have been for a long time, but it's, you know, the hope is that you'd have the conversation in good faith with this community. It sounds like you...
Can I expand on that, sir?
Please.
This is two-and-a-half years. You're a land use attorney, so you understand two-and-a-half years, time is money.
Yeah.
And we started with 90 lots, and we engaged the community. We reduced it to 65, or 63 lots, I'm sorry. That matched the density exactly to the Timbers. We're also surrounded to our west by lots that are far more dense. We then cut it down to 45. And during this whole time, we've limited our building heights, because those were concerns that were brought up during previous meetings. We added parks, we added trails, we gave bigger buffers. And in our last iteration, we're allowing full access for the public to cross through our property, connect to Bayou Gulch open space. Children from 8A and 8B will be able to get to the ballfields, the junior high, the recreational facilities. What it is, is there's just, and we brought this up at our meeting, we're not the enemy. They want 15. And by all the seven criteria and the comprehensive master plan, we meet that for rezone. We are now at 44 lots on 47 acres. That's less than a home per acre. Timbers is one point, almost 1.3. 8A, 8B is two and a half. That's where it's hard to continue to engage when we don't know what, what we're trying to, you know, we tried to get equestrian. We disagree, we agree with the last speaker that this isn't conducive for equestrian. She doesn't live on two-and-a-half acres. We have High Prairie Farms, there's, she said 63 residents, not a, not a horse on it. There's 10,000.
Yeah.
There are 10,000 residents in the Piney. And I can appreciate people not wanting our project, but it's next door to them, and it's the NIMBY attitude, not in my backyard. And that's where, and to be honest with you, I probably misunderstood what you wanted for engagement. Because if we're, what negotiations could happen? There's a letter from one of them, I don't want to call out specific names, and her letter says 16 lots would be an abomination, would be a disacration to Helen Kribble. And again, I present this, this is what Helen Kribble's dream was. She submitted twice for this, 56 lots. So I don't believe her intention was to have this transitional horse property, and we're doing our dang-dest to appease 20, 30 people for, you know, just on our borders. There's 287 homes in 8A and 8B. There's 700 throughout the Timbers, and we're proposing 44 on 47 acres. And we're coming back, we offered at the last meeting, because, you know, we're getting pushback, you know, with the, well, who's going to build the barn? Who's going, we don't know. That's further down the road. But we committed that, you know, we would look at building that at a certain point, you know, a certain lot number sold, that we would commit to that. So that's, I mean, you're humans, and you get 20 people, 30 people gripe in, yeah, it's going to be tough. But as a, as a whole, for the entire Piney, we're not getting that much pushback. You know, these are people that live right next door, and I get it. I get it. They talk about we're for development. As long as you stick to this, that makes us happy. But that's why we have those seven criteria. That's why we have a master plan. There are, how many communities in Douglas County? Only eight are mentioned for being districts that encourage, it says, to encourage rezoning prior to allowing future development outside of it. The Piney is listed as an urban area. It's not, it is not rural. All these people in the Timbers were on two-and-a-half acre lots until somebody came in and rezoned. And when we look at the original intent, we're the 31st Amendment. There's 30 changes before us. You go back to the 70s, it was multifamily and high density. I keep hearing high density. Half-acre lots are not high density. We committed to no lots less than a half acre. And now we're allowing horses, I, I'm speaking for myself, I don't want horses. I don't. It's not conducive for it. But even if it were two-and-a-half acre lots, nobody's going to buy them. The lady that spoke said she lives on five, and she made our point for us on how hazardous it is to have horses and people interact. If you allow two-and-a-half acre lots, where are they going to go? Nowhere different than what we're proposing. And I would rather let the market dictate that. If they're going to bring horses, I can't make people bring horses, and it just feels like the goalposts just keep getting moved on us. You know, now it's, they want these horses. There hasn't been a horse on this property in over 10 years. I can't speak for Helen, but the people we bought it from haven't had horses out there. So this isn't, you know, 100 horses have been grazing out there. The fences, they need to be repaired because it has not been used. There is zero impact to Dr. Tisher. His north property is used more for storage and such. He has all his public facilities and his events are all to the south. And if it was such a big problem... And if it was such a big problem, you can see in that middle exhibit, all those red, that dark red area, that is 8A, 8B. Look how dense that is next to ours, which is highlighted, and Dr. Tisher's there. How come that's not an issue? So that's where you can't board at Dr. Tisher's unless you train with Dr. Tisher. It's not an open facility. You know, and again, I go back to what Helen Kribel, this is what she wanted. She submitted twice for application, and we're less dense than that.
Well, sir, I get it, and part of what our job is, is to balance. We have approval criteria, legal approval criteria. Now, staff, if you can just put the legal approval criteria up for the benefit of the board. It's balancing that with, you know, obviously a process. So we hope that the goalpost never moves, that the legal approval criteria are very clear, comprehensive master plan is clear, zoning is clear. This is a rezone. You're asking for an entitlement that doesn't currently exist. So we get that, also understand the history that there has been rezoning in the past. I think part of it is just, my hope was that you all would talk, and you would get to a place that is a little bit better than what we're seeing today. But I'll just go back to the board. Anything additional from the applicant before we return back to public comment?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. It kind of was referenced by you. Did you feel, you said it was important that you got a public meeting prior to this hearing. It sounded like, were you rushed, or did you feel rushed by our agenda today in order to submit today?
Again, I'll speak for myself. We have other investors that we answer to as well, and we're two and a half years into this. So we've held, if you count our initial meetings, we've had six, six public meetings. You don't get that with other big developments, you don't. We've taught, we've worked tirelessly. And so what had happened is we worked with staff to see if we couldn't find a zoning, some type of work, I wouldn't say work around, but somewhere to fit this equestrian into our subdivision. We'll let the market dictate. I don't want horses. I don't. It's, it doesn't fit. The lots fit. If there was such a high demand, I would think that High Prairie Farms would have horses. They don't. The bridle trails are in disrepair. If you walk around, a lot of them are locked. We're opening it up to everybody. We asked, I'm just trying to think of things that we did. They asked for a gate because they were worried about traffic going to the east. I worked with the fire department and got that approved, from the fire department. Now, we still got to go through county and everything, but I did that. We were worried about our view corridors, which is part of the comprehensive master plan, to preserve views. We limited our house heights to twenty-five feet along our perimeter. These people will, you know, yes, you will see a house down there, but you will still see Pike's Peak. I went through the trouble of cutting cross-sections to show what that would look like, using real-world surveying and house heights. Our tallest rooftop that we're allowing would still be at their walkout level. So if they're at their first floor, they're, they're looking right over us. And we're also several hundred feet away. They talk about the density, if you look at, can you go back to the, well, it's not important. Their neighbors are thirty, forty feet apart in many of these houses. We're, our closest house that could possibly be is, I want to say, a hundred-seventy-five feet. That's the closest that we'd impact anybody. So we've, I feel we have bent over backwards. And this meeting that we did have Thursday, it, it was a mess. And it's, and it's a handful of them that are a mess, disrespectful, and I hate that. I, I mean, I just, I truly hate this process. And I get their concerns that we bought this property knowing it was fifteen lots, yes. But we also looked at it and said, this fits perfectly with the master plan as well as the seven criteria, hence the reason we purchased it. And we immediately engaged the HOAs. They can moan all they want, but we had, we closed on it in December, and we had meetings in January. And what our initial meetings were, I'm just trying to tell you the process that we did. Our initial meetings were with the heads of HOAs, because we wanted to present something, have them take it to their people, come back with input. And the first thing they said was, too many lots. And we said, okay. Came back with sixty-five, that's when we opened it up. I bet our first meeting, we had a hundred people. And it devolved, it, it just devolves into, I've been accused of owning the transportation or the traffic study engineering firm. We've been just called liars. We haven't done anything to lie about. Now, if we didn't follow through, call me a liar. And that's what makes it difficult, because we have this criteria so that it is, or objective for you guys and not subjective. Do we meet this criteria? I, I've lived in Douglas County, shit, I'm fifty-four, say fifty-five, you know, my whole life. You know, I've seen the changes, I get it. But this one makes sense, it truly does, and it meets your criteria. You know, and that's what, that's what's frustrating about this whole process, that we spent two and a half years working this out.
If I could just interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
So what was presented to us today was the, it showed a horse barn there in the horse facilities.
Yes.
In reality, that's not going to be the case. The reality is, it would be up to the future HOA to say, this is the community's land, we can put a park here, we can put a barn here, we can put anything.
This is where we're getting a little ahead, but we're willing to have these discussions, that we are willing to commit to building this structure. Does it just look like a barn? Because the market, there may not be horse owners, they may not need the stalls, but we're, we've been willing to, you know, this comes in the site development part, not now, but we're willing to commit to this. It can look like a barn, get that equestrian feel, that Western look, and it ends up being a community center for them to have their meetings, have their, you know, but then if you do find that there's a demand for it, bring your horses. And that's what we worked for. Doing the loafing sheds, because that was our back and forth with the, the county, was we can't have horses on the individual lots, it does not meet zoning. So they got creative and made these parcels that they could put a shed that's not their own, they don't own the land, but they could put it there so they can be near their horses if they have them. So we're giving them the options, but it's, it keeps, you know, going into this track like, if we had fifteen lots, it's just going to be slammed with horses. It's not. You know, and to say that they're pro-growth, I mean, it's just, it's, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, thank you for that. So we're going to return back to, to citizen comment.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sally McGowan, and my husband and I, we live in Tohee Road, it's in the Timbers filing twenty-two. Last week at the town hall, Pinery Forty's proposal was an attempt to check the boxes on what your community, your committee asked of them back in January. This attempt to incorporate equine elements, their words, is pretty on a map, yet is logistically a joke and unfeasible. I've been a horse owner for decades, and I don't drive fancy cars. I don't have a house in Summit County because I do own a horse. It is very expensive. Just, we'll leave it at that. I've also owned horses that have competed right here at the Colorado Horse Park. Taking one look at the map proposal that we had up earlier and listening to his plan to let the HOA manage the facility, I could tell that this has either not been discussed with an equine facility owner or expert, or the intention is, is it for it to never actually come into fruition. My guess is that it is both. When he was questioned about the viability of his design, he said it was just conceptual. At this point of the process, shouldn't we be way beyond basic conceptions? The lack of acreage for the number of horses he is planning on, the fact that the water-retention ponds are incorporated in the turnout areas, which he does not denote on the pretty map, and that the creek is included in the equine enjoyment area is all not realistic. Never mind the ninety-degree turns on neighborhood streets that will be incredibly difficult, if not impossible, for a horse trailer, a manure truck, or a hay truck to maneuver. I could go on and on about this flawed plan, but it will end with, I will end with reiterating that clearly Mr. Hall and his associates have no desire to see an equine-friendly neighborhood realistically function on this property. If built as proposed today, he is not only doing the current surrounding neighborhoods and the Colorado Horse Park a disservice, he's also misrepresenting the new neighborhood to its future homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment?
Could you show the map again one more time? My name is Scott Toppin. I am one of the owners of the Colorado Horse Park, seventy-five, twenty-two, South Pinery Drive, Parker, Colorado. We've been speaking about my partner, Dr. Tisher. He's unable to be here tonight, so I'm here to address our concerns with this proposal. A couple of things to clarify, our property, we will continue to board and train horses on our property. We're a veterinary facility, and we will also have public horse shows on our property, hopefully forever. That's our intention. The property line there, along the north edge of our property with the day stalls adjacent to it, that is the part of our property that's going to be a veterinary facility. So to have a day stall next to a veterinary facility makes no sense whatsoever. There has been no outreach from this group to Dr. Tisher or any of our group to get any of our insight in terms of designing a decent equestrian facility on their property. It seems to me like it's just window dressing, and it sounds like it's window dressing, too, in terms of trying to appease the public by including an equestrian element that is completely unrealistic. I'm a horse doctor, and I think I can speak for our horse-owning clients, that there aren't many of them that would want to own a million-dollar home and then board their house on a very small, six-acre area in the center of that property with no reasonable turnout or anything like that. That's, I'm unaware of a horse owner that would be attracted to that. I do think that horse owners would be very attracted to two-and-a-half-acre lots that were zoned for equestrian, that were next to a world-class equestrian event center. That's been very successful in other parts of the country, it's been very successful in Florida, California, to name a couple, where people would, would snap those properties up. So I think there's a, there's a tremendous value there. So to me, that makes the hardship argument for this property a little bit harder. We purchased our property, all of those other homes around this property bought their homes with the understanding that the zoning there was going to be two-and-a-half-acre lots, fifteen of them that would accommodate horses. That's the planned development that I think is referred to in section number one of your, of the rules and regulations here. So I see no reason to change that. I haven't heard a reasonable hardship, and I urge you to say no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional citizen comment?
My name is Ed Lickman. I live at fifty-seven, fifty, Regal Oak Lane, Parker. I'm the president of Timbers T30A HOA, and I represent the owners of twenty-three, twenty-three homeowners in the HOA. I've lived in the Timbers for eight years with my wife. Speaking on behalf of our HOA members, we are opposed to changing the existing zoning, which currently provides two-and-a-half-acre equestrian building lots. At the January meeting, when I spoke to the issue of Pinery Forty, Forty's LLC's request to change the zoning, I talked about the reasons my wife and I and my fellow residents decided to move to the Timbers back in two thousand and seventeen. I think it's important to reiterate some of that. Without exaggeration, each of my fellow HOA members expressed a sense of having arrived as special place when we drove up South Pinery Parkway. We were drawn to the Colorado Horse Park pastures, the iconic white fencing, the magnificent Pond de Rosa pines, and the abundant open space, which is the Timbers. Now, this may sound somewhat contrived, but to this day, my neighbors and I often talk about our collective good fortune in having to, in living in this amazing space. As an older cohort, let's say, because most of us are retirees, my fellow HOA members are not opposed to development. We realize that if it were not for development of new housing options, we wouldn't be living where we live today. So let me be clear. While we are disappointed to see forty-seven acres of pristine pastures that Pinery Forty LLC has purchased to turn into streets and homes, we realize that sooner or later, this property would be developed. Nevertheless, we take comfort in the fact that the existing zoning provides for a maximum of fifteen equestrian estates. Before we purchased our homes back in two thousand and seventeen, we questioned what might become of the Colorado Horse Park should it cease to exist. We all understood that should the property be sold or subdivided, it was pre-zoned for two-and-a-half-acre lots. It remains our reasonable expectation that this specific residential zoning will be maintained. That zoning reflects a thoughtful and long-term vision on the part of the horse park owners and county planners to preserve the open, rural, and equestrian objective of the property. This certainly played a part in our decision to purchase our home. Most of us are not home horse owners or horse riders, but that doesn't mean we do not thoroughly enjoy being part of an equestrian community where we can marvel at the beauty of the animals and the lifestyle of those who do. Fifteen estates would enhance the existing equestrian design of that western edge of the Timbers and provide a beautiful and logical residential transition from the horse park facility to the Timbers and the Douglas County open space.
And sir, if you could wrap up your comments, you're at time.
I'm a president, so I think I get six minutes.
You're a president of an HOA? Did you say that?
Yes.
Did he not get the full six minutes? Okay, let's add another three.
I'll be brief.
Sure.
During the January meeting, I believe you, Commissioner Layden, said that you weren't inclined to overturn existing residential zoning in the absence of some overriding or compelling reason to do so. I hope I understood that correctly. At the conclusion of that meeting, six months ago, the commissioners asked the developer to further engage the surrounding community to hold a forum, an open-ended town hall, to determine if there was some logical way to achieve the mutual objectives of Pinery Forty LLC and the existing community. That didn't happen. Nevertheless, after reviewing Pinery Forty's LLC's latest reiteration of their suggested plat plan, which was filed just a few days ago without community input, we don't believe it achieves an elegant or logical residential transition from the horse park to the existing Timbers community. Nor does their amended narrative provide additional or compelling rationale for changing the existing zoning. On behalf of my fellow HOA members, I respectfully ask the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to uphold the unanimous vote of the planning board to deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Additional citizen comment?
Hello, my name is Damian Luna, and I live down the block from horse, the horse park in Shire Metals. I'd like to read some important portions of Dr. Tisher's letter, which was posted today on the online project records. First, he indicates, "To clear up a few misunderstandings related to the applicant's comments and planning department's statements, our property, the Colorado Horse Park, retains its original zoning and has not rezoned to be a commercial-type zoning. We still can and do have public horse boarding and training, will always and forever have public horse shows at this venue. The applicant is still asking for a zoning change to allow increased density. Our property has a very large border with the applicant's property, and the change in zoning affects us significantly. Having equestrian lots to our north border and the middle school and the high school on the other borders gives the horse park the look and feel intended with the original design, original design, and the fifteen equestrian lots complement this amenity in Douglas County, preserving a type of product that is sorely needed. These equestrian lots would have a high-dollar value and can be sold very easily. This type of- of product is very common next to large horseparks in Michigan and Florida, to name a couple. I do not believe that the applicant is being unduly harmed financially by needing this zoning. It seems the easiest path, and is a sad change from the original zoning, that makes this part of Douglas County unique. An HOA horse facility with 44 homes obligated to support it is not something I have seen work. This is a very small number of homes to support the needs of a horse facility. Ken Correll, for example, has an HOA horse property with what I would guess are thousands of homes to help support it. This seems like a way to try to appease the B.O.C.C. with an equestrian feel without any real thoughts on how it might really work. We believe in the rights of landowners and are not anti-development, but zoning is a place for a reason, and it seems very clear to me that the original intention of this zoning is still very much in play today. I urge you to vote no on this next plan and encourage them to develop under the original equestrian estate zoning and the partial that came with it. Lastly, as I've stated at the last B.O.C.C. meeting, the horse industry in Colorado has a multi-billion-dollar impact on our state's economy, and the Colorado Horse Park in Douglas County leads the state in hosting the largest shows, bringing significant revenue to the county every year. We purchased this amazing property because there was zoning in place to our north that would complement our business and limit any negative impact and direct non-equine neighbors would have right next to our property line. You will notice that our property has a built-in buffer between our operations and the neighbors to the east and west. With the original zoning and the plan these equestrian lots form, the obvious and correct blend from our property is to the north. I'm out of time, but what Dr. Tisher said here at the end is, please do what is right, the right thing, and vote no on the increased density.
Thank you, sir. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir?
My name is Russ Rogers, and my wife, Renee, and I live at 803 Ford Tohe Road, and we've been there over 16 years. As you have heard from a number of people and you'll hear from others, the developer submissions, and in particular, the narratives, contain a number of inaccuracies. I would like to address just three of them here. The developer states, quote, "The average density of the adjoining subdivisions is 1.32 dwelling units per acre." From the county plat bats, Timbers 22 and 23 adjoining have a combined 294 homes on 328 acres. That is .9 dwelling per acre. So why is a developer using some kind of creative math to make this proposal look less dense than the adjoining Timbers when it isn't? They claim the current zoning was overlooked and past rezoning. The developer called this area an undeveloped void or chasm. I urge you, look at the satellite pictures of this area. Look at the pictures. This is very clearly prairie land, always has been. It has been used as a pastureland until the purchase and currently still looks that way. The transition between the wooded Timbers area and this prairie land is clear and obvious. As Timbers homeowners, we pay to have 10 old-grooved ponderosa trees sprayed on our half-acre for beetle prevention. There aren't 10 trees on this 47 acres. It is not possible for this area to ever look and feel like the Timbers. The developer claims that, claimed also, "Equestrian land use is not compatible with surrounding properties," and said, "Did the adjoining residents consider odors and insects resulting from the laths, from the livestock?" There's actually an equestrian term for this argument. It's called horse manure. Our son lives in an equestrian area in Southern California. He has two-and-a-half acres, four horses, goats, and chickens. We've stayed there many, many times. They host 50 people every week for their church youth group. We were there just this June for our granddaughter's graduation with over 100 people. Dinner was served outside. There are no issues. Kids are playing volleyball in a corral right next to the horses. Whoever wrote the narrative about incompatibility clearly has no knowledge or experience with equestrian properties. It's also stated, it is not, it is also, that equestrians may travel on existing trails, meaning Timbers, intended for pedestrians if equestrian estates are developed. This argument makes no sense, as these 47 acres do not adjoin any existing paved trails in the Timbers, zero. That's because the 47 acres is clearly designed and intended and connects to the Bayou Trails to the south. In conclusion, please take a factual, historical look at this. Vote no to leave these 47 acres with the original, natural, and best intent as equestrian estates. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Additional citizen comment?
Hi, guys. My name is Darren Senior. I live at 7958 Sistina Way. My wife and I have lived there for eight years. Thank you very much for taking your time to listen to me today. I'm going to keep it really brief. You've heard a lot of facts. You've heard some things that aren't facts, and you've heard a lot of noise. Clearly, this is unique property. This property was intended for a specific purpose, and it was zoned as such. You purchased that property knowing exactly what it was zoned for. There are seven criteria up there. One of them is not, I can't make enough money on the zoning that is currently in place. If we don't know what the land is zoned for next to us...
Sir, we're going to, please address the board and not the applicant.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't realize that. Guys, the integrity of the zoning system is what we have when we purchase sometimes the biggest investment in our life. It's difficult if you cannot know for sure what is going to be placed on that property. Caveat emptor, right? They talk about compromise. The only compromising that seems to be being asked for here is that we compromise and raise the numbers up. Just because you started at 130 doesn't mean that you're doing us a favor that you're now down to 45 and then 44. Clearly, the assignment that was given to them by Commissioner Layden to meet with the community was misunderstood, and that's fair. But there's certainly, as somebody who lives on Sistina Way directly adjacent to the southeast part of this land, I've never been spoken to one time about what my intentions might be or what I would like to see. Honestly, I agree. This land is going to get developed. It's a beautiful property. These seem like great guys. I'm sure a round of golf with them would be a lot of fun. However, that doesn't mean that you get to change it just so you can make more money. That's it. That's all this is. It's what it boils down to. To speak of what Helen wanted from the grave, what her intention was, all we've actually got is the current zoning. I mean, I don't have a Ouija board. The lights could flash. I don't know. But she left it at 15 homes. That's it. I certainly appreciate your time today. You guys have asked some awesome questions today. I think you do understand the heart of the matter here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being with us, sir. Additional citizen comment?
Hello, my name is Mark Ballerston. I live at 5541 Nut Hats Road with my wife Christine. We moved recently in this area, but I'm a Colorado native, born and raised. Grew up on my family's ranch and properties in eastern Colorado. I was the hired help back in the day, family ranching and all that, so I've taken care of many horses and put up hay and did all the feeding and all that kind of stuff. So the outline of the plan that was presented recently is very tough to swallow in terms of having horses there in a common area like that. So I think a lot of the facts and a lot of points have already been brought up on that, but I have a hard time with that also. Also, swapping some of the property around and rearranging things, I believe, adds another factor of flood and drainage issues with some of the storm retention ponds being converted into different spaces for horses and things like that. I also feel the intent of the original zoning was a transitional-type property from what's in the Timbers to the north and transition to the south. If you look to the south from Bayou Gulch Road, from the middle school and all that, you've got some really nice, huge pieces of property with people that have horses and bigger chunks of property and bigger houses and barns and all these kinds of things. And I think the intent there was to have that transition as such, not to directly copy or mimic whatever the development is in the Timbers. So that kind of begs to the issue of one of the approval standards, is this is really fitting the intent of the original zoning? That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to pause you for a second, and I do have a quick question for staff. So, and I want to clarify for the board, we already did take a public comment at the original hearing, so this is additional. We can cut off public comment at any time, but want to make sure that we're honoring the time of those that are here. So thank you all for the comments that you have shared with us. But I'll just share that where I'm struggling is with 152001 with the original intent. And you know, you look at this massive, multi-page packet, and you get down to the staff analysis around 152001, and it really comes down to whether or not the original intent for PA63 was for 2.5-acre equestrian estate lots, or whether the entire surrounding area is now more consistent with 1/3 to 1-acre lots. And that's, that is where I'm struggling. So how did those adjacent areas get platted with 1/3 to 1-acre lots if the original intent of the PD was 2.5-acre equestrian lots?
Mike Basico for staff. They would have had to have gone through a similar PD amendment to develop lots of this size. It's very similar to what we're going through today, and those PD amendments were approved.
Yeah. So it was, it was us. It was a board or a board that came before us that said, okay, we're going to make a modification, a plan, an amendment to the PD or a rezone so that those, yeah. Okay. Well, I'm going to, let me poll the board. Are we interested in additional citizen comment, or would you like to move to applicant response and deliberation?
I have questions for staff.
Okay, please.
Mike, so Kurt, I want to, so we've heard the applicant talk several times pertaining to getting the permit from the county in order to have an equestrian use. Can you give me an idea what work was done with planning staff to, to, as the, I think I'm paraphrasing very correctly, that the applicant has obtained the means to have an equestrian use?
I mean, the work that, I think the work that was done, there was never an approval given or a permit. It was to make sure that the proposal wasn't, wouldn't run afoul of the zoning resolution, or maybe other development standards within the Pinerie PD that maybe specifically would have prohibited some type of equestrian use. Because initially, there was a thought to have, you know, horses on a half-acre lot, which isn't allowed by the zoning resolution. Hence, they revised their plan to have more of a centralized equestrian use. That's the type of guidance, for lack of a better term, that we provided. There wasn't anything that, at the time that we said, yep, this is, you know, we approve this. It's good to go.
So these changes, then, are consistent with other, with other conditions that exist in the current planning development?
Well, I mean, some of the proposed uses are new, hence the amendment, but they wouldn't necessarily run afoul of the, like, animal regulations or setbacks or that type of thing. That's really what we were concerned with and didn't want to bring a document forward that couldn't even be, couldn't be, there'd be a use that wouldn't even be allowed.
Okay, so we are hearing a great deal of testimony as to which, you know, the experience of individuals are not being called into question, saying this would not be conducive to good equestrian standards. However, the standards that were applied are not, are not in violation of the county's standards that would be applicable either with the zoning resolution or the, any other provision in the Pinerie PD.
Yes, in terms of the equestrian use, that's correct.
Okay. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys providing that answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Ben Winkle, any clarifying questions or discussion for you?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I do see a large line of folks that seem to continue building up to speak. If it would be okay, Mr. Chairman, could I ask the room essentially to raise your hand if your testimony that you were, would be providing is similar to the previous four or five people that testified, essentially in opposition to this? Oh?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to clarify the question, and Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong. If you are testifying in opposition of this application, please raise your hand. Okay. And all of those that are testifying or in opposition to the application, if you could raise your hand?
No.
I'm sorry, in support, all those in support of the application, raise your hand. Okay, we have one, and I know we heard a few earlier from the EDC. Okay.
Definitely. And Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to avoid duplication and see from the crowd kind of a visual for us. So thank you.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and thank you for all the citizens that are wanting to testify. All again, poll the board. Are we interested in additional testimony, or are we ready for response from the applicant to the testimony and further deliberation?
Honestly, I'm in favor of perhaps a break and then coming back to address the question from the chair.
Okay. All right. We're going to recess for a few minutes. Stretch your legs, do a bio break, and we'll be back here in five minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Actually, good evening. We are recording.
It is, in fact, evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the brief bio break there. We're gonna reconvene here. We are going to end citizen testimony at this point. Thank you so much for testifying, and bring it back to the applicant for a response to citizen testimony.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, Russell Hall with High Line Engineering. We've touched base on a couple of these items that were brought up tonight. I just, I'll get through those very quickly. With regards to, you know, this project creating drainage issues or erosion control issues, we're actually downstream of the Timbers subdivision, and we're not contributing to a condition that exists on, on their site. And of course, you know, as this develop, if this development moves forward, we would be designing our facilities in accordance with the county criteria to manage and control those types of issues. There was some discussion about the land use. This, this equestrian center, this private equestrian center would not be something that would even be compared to the Colorado Horse Park with, with competitive jumping and other, other types of venues that occur on that property. This, this venue would be for recreation. So, myself, as a new grandfather, you know, can take a, you know, his granddaughter out for a ride, you know, in, in the open space area. This is not going to be one of those competitive nature type facilities, in my opinion, moving forward. We've also had some discussion about the original intent of this development. In our, in our initial proposal, presentation in January, and we were prepared to restate it tonight, that this, this property, this PUD for the Pinery originally had 2,249 lots proposed on it. That's the original intent, if you go back to the original PUD for the Pinery subdivision. It was later changed to two and a half acre lots in the Third Amendment, and that created only 449 lots of two and a half acre lots that spread across, across a large, over 500 acres of this develop, of this PUD area. Then, then we have this, another developer come in and, because, and they went back to the original zoning. This is the only piece remaining in that original zoning that still proposes, or allows zoning for two and a half acre equestrian lots. It's the last piece. We're just following suit, I guess, in a sense, with the trend to go back to the original intent for the zoning for the Pinery subdivision. We, there was a few statements, you know, that we have not tried to reach out to the community and meet with people. We, we, we reached, I personally reached out to Dr. Tisher multiple times, trying to get his input on the assistance in the design of this private equestrian center. He declined all of the meetings, and we, we did not get any input from him. Unfortunately, I don't know what his expertise is in this field, you know, as a vet, but, but he, he is a horse person, and I, and I think that he, his input would have been valuable. I still think there's opportunity, as we go through preliminary plat, to work with Dr. Tisher and, and iron out some of those details and work out, you know, if he does have any concerns with the way that we've laid our current land use out. But we're talking about site development plan, and we're talking about preliminary plat when I, when I'm discussing these things with Dr. Tisher in the future. But, you know, we, we have also, there was some discussion about, you know, can an HOA maintain a facility like this? And, and I, and I tried to describe it, you know, in my initial presentation tonight, that the, the HOA would own and maintain the structures. And that's the, that's the part that would be a shared cost. So, we're not putting a ridiculous price tag for someone who doesn't own a horse to help pay for someone who does own a horse. So, there's gonna be a division there, where the structures are gonna be the monuments and the, and the western field for this project, moving forward. And the horse, and if you own a horse, then you're gonna pay for that horse. You're gonna pay for his feed, his care, and, and, but you're gonna board them on the facilities owned by the HOA. Now, there's, we've met with staff, and we had this discussion early on about how, how, you know, what, what other facilities are there in Douglas County that have encountered this type, similar situation? And facilities that have failed try to hire a caretaker to live on, and a caretaker residence reside on site and maintain the horses in the facility. And, and those are the, those are the facilities that have failed historically in Douglas County. Our, our suggestion here, and our plan to move forward, is to put more responsibility on the horse owners themselves to make sure that their horse is properly taken care of. I think that that, that kind of concludes my rebuttal to testimony I've heard tonight, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm gonna bring it back to the board for further deliberation and/or motion.
I gotta tell you, at this stage of the game, I, I started this meeting very, being very doubtful if the... Am I good? Oh, cool.
You are now?
Excellent. I started this meeting very, being very doubtful if the, if the applicant could, could meet our approval standards. I had very real concerns in our last meeting that the applicant could meet 01, definitely 01, 02. I had doubts about 03. And I've changed my mind. I, I think, listen, as I was saying with staff earlier, I am sure we have many experienced equestrians in the public right now. I do not, I'm not, I'm not even equipped to second guess you. But we also had residents say, you know, we're so far along, we should be dealing at the details, not at this upper level. Guys, this is a zoning change. This is the upper, this is the highest level, other than the original PD, the, the PD hearing. And so, no, actually, I think, I, I like what the, the work that the applicant has done. I think the applicant has done, taken the concern seriously. And I get that we have members of the public who, you don't agree. You don't, you don't think that the, that the, on a technical level, that there can be success with this. But that's not our job today, to pick that winner and loser, and to say, no, guys, you need, you need to have 14 horses there. Otherwise, it's gonna fail. Because, you know what? I don't know that. That wasn't my business. I was in the software industry before I got elected to this job. And so, I like that the applicant has opened up the capability to being more like the stated intent of the planned development. And I do not find the applicant's desire for additional density in any way contradicts the initial PD, particularly since we are on the 31st amendment to the PD. So, I don't know. I, I, to please the board, I have a motion to approve the plant, the Pinery Plan Development 31st Amendment, because it does meet all the approval criteria with three conditions as presented. Project file ZR2023-002.
Sounds like we might need a little bit more deliberation before. I'll, I'll accept that motion. I'm not, I'm, is there a second?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman. I'm still struggling with that point 01, in that, I mean, the current standards, commitments, and overall intent of the development is 15 lots. And the mo, hearing today is to move it to 44 lots. We did get a little lost in the, what I felt, or for me, which might be that moving goalposts that was referred to earlier. But I do think we got lost in whether it's a horse barn, or whether it's just gonna be a barn with picnic tables under it, or, or what, what that facility could be someday. That's up to, I believe, the, the Future Homeowners Association, that would have to draft this, but I do rely upon experts in the community to identify whether that makes sense for horses and, and horse property owners, and I'm persuaded that it does not. Regardless, I think we could have gotten to that conclusion, had you had more meetings with the veterinarians and the, and the horse community in, in this particular area. It is compelling to me that, that some of the adjacency next to this parcel has higher density. But one comment that stood out to me is that this is the last, the last parcel that is possible to have 2.5 acre equestrian estates. It, it troubles me that there have been previous plats that have been inconsistent with, you know, the intent for that 2.5 acre equestrian estate. I recognize that the original, original may have been somewhat distinct from that and much more high density, but that was before a lot of properties were built out in that area. I tend to think that with some additional thought and planning, that 2.5 acre equestrian estate concept wasn't arrived upon casually. I don't like rezones, I don't like deviating from original intent, especially when property owners purchase their property in reliance upon zoning. So I, I do think with some conversation in February, March, April, or May, some resolution around density and equestrian use could have been achieved. I didn't see that today. So for me, as it stands now, I, I'm not comfortable moving this forward. And had I known that such little progress had been made on the conversations, I probably would not have been open to removing it from being tabled. But that's just me. Commissioner Teal, did you have some additional comments?
I don't know, guys. What if it was, what if they were in here asking for 17? They weren't asking for 44. Are we then going to, somebody out there, I guarantee it, somebody out there would be saying, but that's three too many. Why, why is that okay? And so, you know, if, if it's a matter of density, either, either then the answer is always gonna be, there is no acceptable increase in density, period, or then we have to understand what kind of accommodations for the rest of our criteria. Because our criteria doesn't talk about density. And by the way, this is an infill development. There is no density now. And yet we have a landowner who is asking to capitalize on their property, which generally we tend to support. We believe in that. And so, I don't know. I'm, I'm looking at the accommodations they have made to still find their vision and capitalize on that property. We have people who have assured us with great experience that they could do great under the current density. I gotta tell you, that's where I started in January, of tell me why, you know, you just can't use your current density. The only problem is, that's not a part of our criteria. And guys, we, we are the ones that have control of this criteria, but we talked about making changes to our zoning resolution today. We didn't talk about this. So again, now, that's, that can be something we address in the future. Maybe we want to, in this meeting, go and huddle with our development staff and tell them, you gotta fix it, because we don't like that density increasing. But that's not the rules that these guys have come before us with. These are the rules, that we told them, we follow. I believe, and, and Kevin, you are very correct. You know what? These accommodations for an equestrian use may never come to pass. Even, I think of the, my neighborhood has, has a putting green. And every five years, there's a discussion in my HOA of tearing out that stupid expensive putting green that nobody uses, and every time, somebody comes to the HOA meeting saying, no, no, I used that six months ago, before I went and played Tory Pines. I don't wanna lose that putting green. And we still have the putting green. So your point is very salient, in that it will be up to the future residents on what actually occurs. Well, that's up to those future residents. And I guess the question before us is, you know, we can decide for them, I suppose, and we can decide for them that you're not gonna be a future resident. I don't know. Again, I came back to the fact that I felt like I gave very loose general criteria to the applicant, when the applicant requested it back in January. For me, the applicant has met what I wanted to see. And I do realize, there are many people in this room that are gonna say, but they didn't meet what I wanted to see. I know, folks, but you're not here doing this job. You could, 'cause you're all in my district, and in three years, you can have an opportunity to be sitting right here, too. So, but based on, I don't know if, you know, we, we have it as a part of our criteria, that anything these applicants say, we're gonna hold a commitment to? Tell you what, what I said in January, actually, I'm satisfied. I think they, they made an effort that, quite frankly, they didn't mean to make. They could've cut bait and found a buyer, and dangled, dangled the Helen Cribble plan in front of them, and said, this is what the original owner wanted to do. You can do that, too, give us, give us what we need to get, get square again, and get flush again. But they didn't. They, I, I did hear everyone. Had a meeting with the public that did not go well. I heard everyone. I, I understand what you said. But they tried. They made the effort. I suppose we could end this by telling them they need to make more effort. I don't feel comfortable doing that right now. I feel that's, well, we're not supposed to use words like honor anymore in our society, but no, I felt like I gave a, a criteria, and they met it. Ergo, the motion has not been withdrawn.
I appreciate that, and I think, you know, we're taking the time to be as thoughtful and deliberate about this as possible, so I really respect the differing opinions on this board. I, I like your question about, you know, the hypothetical, if they came in with 17, where would we be? I think being hypothetical is dangerous, and I, I wouldn't commit to a, a particular position, but I could imagine a scenario where the applicant said, we had a meeting in February, we had a meeting in April, we had a meeting in May. We have reached an agreement with the citizens of this community that 25 is the right number, and there will be some appropriate level of equestrian use that meets the needs of the community and reflects the expertise of the veterinarian community. That would be an interesting conversation. That would have met the assignment. To me, what we asked for in January was not met today, or at any point in the last several months. So I tend to, I, I tend to agree that I, this is just not supportable for me today. And again, I go back to 03, will this affect the public interest or enjoyment of the adjacent land? We know from doing this for a while, that if it met that criteria, the applicant comes in with a stack of letters saying, we support it, and the chairs are empty, because citizens don't usually show up when they're happy.
I get it. I have to disagree with you. I disagree. That has never once happened. Never once. Never once in the 11 years I've been in elected office and dealing with land use, that has never once happened. Even when the, even when the development applicant makes every effort, sits in kitchen tables, come on, Abe, that doesn't happen.
An applicant with letters of support?
We, we don't see that turnover. We are still going to have someone in this audience that says, listen, I'm not gonna see the last three inches of Pike's Peak.
Yeah, we might have a couple. Kevin?
I believe you're both correct, and I agree with both of you on, on those thoughts. But frankly, for me, it boils down to the fact, I can't believe it's January, that was six months ago, for crying out loud. I expected, when I saw this back on the agenda for today, that there would be not simply one rushed community meeting, and not one less lot. I thought we'd come forward today with a plan that's like, yeah, there's still heartburn over it, but we adjusted, we heard these comments, and we responded this way. And I'm not gonna pick a number, but one less lot, in one very rushed meeting last week, just prior to this, is not what I was expecting, once we recessed in January.
Well, I think we've had some pretty strong deliberation, and, you know, I think the comments are well appreciated from both of you, and I, I respect the level of commitment you both have to serving our citizens and making the right decision. I, I think at this point, I would be open to entertaining a, a motion. You could or deny?
No, I, and Mr. Chairman, I, I do think the community, there is a place for this community in the future of Douglas County, and I think it's not incredibly far off. My expectations for changes between January and now fell dramatically short, and so, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I would prefer to go back to where we started this meeting, which is to table it, and see if there can be progress, 'cause I don't think it's something that, I don't see a future in Douglas County where there's not houses in that land surrounded by other homes. I think there probably will be homes there someday, but right now, we have a very grumpy group of neighbors who feel like they haven't been reached out to, and it sounds like between January now, they really haven't been. I admire, I admire you guys for holding the meeting last week, and it sounds like that was, I'm not sure if that was on the county side of us scheduling this meeting, or if it was on, on your side, or probably shared blame. But I did expect more of a compromise between January now than 44 lots and a, and group of part of land that may or may not ever come to fruition.
Commissioner Teal, any thoughts?
Hey, guys, I already put my course of action open. I mean, listen, if we wanna keep this open, you know, if we fail to come to a decision, we failed, if, if we, we do come to a decision, then we've got a decision. Obviously, one group of people here are gonna be happy, one group of people are not gonna be happy. If we fail to come to a decision, have we made anybody happy, other than ourselves being able to go and grab dinner? We could certainly do that. I mean, obviously, the applicant knows that the ball has been moved a little further than we saw in January. I think the adjacent residents who have come out to speak will also understand that the ball has been moved. And I have to be honest, I don't hear a lot of cross-talking between these parties, the opposed parties. So perhaps, perhaps another motion to table and give the applicant more opportunity to speak with the residents could, could work out. It certainly, it certainly doesn't decide anything.
Well, and I could go all night. That's a, that's the style I'm used to, is all-night hearings, so that part doesn't bother me one bit. What bothered me is the six months that have passed, and it's gone from 45 to 44. But I do foresee a future where there will be homes, and, and there will be streets, and there will be micro parks, and there will be kids, and, and dogs, and maybe even horses, I don't know. But I do foresee a future where there will be some homes in that territory. Just the, the concerns I had with point 01 and 3 have not been subsided in the six months that have passed, and I was hoping for more progress. And so therefore, Mr. Chairman, I move to table the pinery planned development, 31st Amendment, once again.
My, I've made my point clear, but I will second.
So we do have a first and second on the floor, and I, I've candidly heard enough, I'm, I am fully prepared to deny. And I think six months is, is a long enough amount of time for the applicant to have been able to, to get that done. I guess part of my, my question would be, for the applicant, is, is tabling this for you to have an opportunity to, to do what we asked you to do, something that you'd even be able to, to do or entertain at this point? I, I don't wanna spin our wheels here, if this is gonna end up in the same spot in December.
It would have to be a quick, 'cause time is money.
Yeah.
I have been texting the investors. They're willing to even go a little further, but we have a timeline. I'm okay.
What I was stating was, I had been in contact with some of our investors, 'cause initially we were given, have it done by May. We're, we're done hanging on. And we said, well, we're close with the county, you know, let's give it just a little bit more, and we'll get a hearing hopefully in July or something. So then they agreed. So now they're saying, yes, but we gotta keep it, like a short timeline. And now, I'm, I clearly hear what you're asking. You know, I, I heard have a town hall, you know, and that's what we did. And that was after, for whatever they wanna believe, it was after we got okay to do what we presented. So it did take that time. I didn't, you know, it was stated quite right, that there's not a whole lot of good dialogue. I would be willing, and I believe our investors would be willing, to let us go a few more months, you know, and see if we can't come to, you know, a lesser lot number. I don't know what that is. Is that get rid of us having to commit to equestrian stuff?
Order. Commissioner Layden, just to be direct to your question. I asked on multiple occasions, including last week and, and the meeting prior to that, is, is there any number in between what we're proposing and the 15 lots? And it was an unanimous no. Nobody would do to...
Hey, guys. So we are, we need to keep order in the room, guys, please.
To Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Teal's point 1617, there, there was no. And, and we're, we're okay with, with, I mean, we keep working, we keep trying to compromise, but we keep negotiating against ourselves. And we have asked multiple times, what is that number? And, and we can't seem to get any kind of consensus, or actually, even one person say, hey, we would like this number. We have, we have still not gotten any number. We're the only people that keep going down.
Okay. So what I'm hearing, and I, I wanna assume best intent in people, and I also recognize that time is money, and it is hard to be a private property owner, and have to go through process after process after process, and feel like you're not making any progress. I don't know if you will, but my job is not to make the business decisions. It's to make sure that we honor our approval standards, honor my board, and, and the citizens of this community. So what I would ask, and I would support, I'm hearing consensus from the board, is for you to honor the assignment, engage directly with these amazing individuals that took time out of their night to be here tonight, and have a conversation in good faith. And if you have an opportunity to get to a space that makes sense, and you can come back before this board, I think we'd be excited to hear that. What I will say, I do agree with, with Commissioner Van Winkle and Commissioner Teal, the, the number isn't zero here. But the, the number also isn't 45, right? So I, I do see a delta, a window, that, that magic window of, of possibility, but it's pretty narrow. Because the board has made a motion, I will support my colleagues. There is a first and second on the floor. Any additional discussion from the board?
To have the applicant bring this back again, I mean, we did have the applicant state, reaching out for support from, and there were specific individuals that were mentioned. We then heard associated individuals saying, we didn't talk to them. My, if I hear that again, my, if I hear the applicant once again tell me, individuals were reached out to, and there was no response, my, my situation's not changing, because I, I'm just not hearing, I'm, I'm just hearing stonewalling from the community to actually work, move forward. And guys, you're allowed, as individuals, to have that perspective. You can do that. But we've got the responsibility to make a decision, and I'm just telling you, that's not, can we have order?
Hey, guys, we do need to have order in the room.
Some people should be glad I'm 56 years old and fat. There were different times. But no, we've got a... But no, uh, we've got a responsibility here, and I, I take that responsibility very serious. So, I, I really think this is a two-way street. We need the neighborhood to do more than just stonewell on this. That is my perspective. I know I am one of three.
I agree with those statements. Um, we all know what it's like to say, you know, we're gonna paint this wall dark gray, and someone says, no, it has to be black, and one person says, no, it has to be white. It's like, well, and there's a no give and take there whatsoever. I do, like I said, I do foresee a future where there are homes here. It makes sense with the surrounding community, to some extent. But it needs to meet with, it needs to be consistent with the plan development, and, um, that's just not where it seems like it is today. So, I do hope the members of the community will, um, be productive, say things like, we would be okay with this, we would not be okay, it's these two lots that we absolutely hate, or it's the, the, the 15-foot barriers, we need a 20-foot barrier, something like, something productive, um, from both sides, and a little more give and take, um, I think can get us to a spot where maybe everyone's a little bit frustrated, maybe everyone's a little bit okay with the neighborhood they live in, which is the goal at the end of the day, because Douglas County is a great, amazing place to live, people wanna live here. It's a great, amazing neighborhood, people wanna live in that neighborhood. And, um, I think the future is homes of some kind, all on those, in that space. Um, just something, something between where we are and where I hope we come in the future.
Yeah, I agree with that, and it, I, I really hearken back to the history of this county and who we are as citizens here. And Douglas County citizens are good people, and our history are, you know, it's, it's neighbors working with neighbors and having those conversations, even when they're hard, you know, even when they're difficult. So, um, I, I think Commissioner Teal, you have a very good grasp of what, um, this board is asking, which is, let's be good neighbors, and let's engage in the conversation in good faith, let's listen, um, approach it with, uh, some measure of skepticism, but maybe some willingness to find, uh, that middle ground that may make sense. And if it doesn't, then, then we know. Um, but I, I'm gonna assume best intent here and, uh, honor the, the motion from my board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously. So with that, uh, we are about wrapped up. The next land use meeting, public hearing, will be held on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, at 2:30 PM. We are adjourned.